All right, everybody. Welcome to regular town council meeting town of Cave Creek, Arizona, January 3rd, 2022. Evelyn? Probably should have done the roll call first, but we'll go ahead and do that now. I get them out of order. It's important to do the pledge.
It is. Councilmember Roy A. Here. Councilmember Morris.
Here.
Councilmember McGuire.
Present.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Deefenderfer.
Here.
Councilmember Sova.
Here.
Mayor Bunch.
Ah, here. All present, accounted for. All right. First thing on here is this proclamation that I signed, and I'm going to find a copy of it here. It's in here, and I'll tell you what it's about. It's called Speak Up, Stand Up, Save a Life Month. Speak Up, Stand Up, Save a Life Movement presents an ideal opportunity to help bridge the gap between young people, our local community, government, law enforcement in a positive way. See something with a kid that's got a problem, you tell somebody about it and keep, keeps suicides and all kinds of good stuff down. And Ja- in January is a Speak Up, Stand Up, Save a Life Month. Moving right along, a call to the public.
We have no members.
We have none? Wow. Hey, you know what? Usually it's got a place for me to talk in here, too. Hope everybody had fun this morning when we cut the ribbon on a brand new fire station. Happy, happy to see that happen. Carrie, go right ahead with the town manager report.
I just have one item that was brought to my attention by councilmember Roy A. There were text amendments at, to the Miracopa County Digital Billboard Ordinance that had some opposition from our council members because of the, the lighting aspect and being a dark sky community. And amongst other things. But there were some, when they adopted that, there were some exemptions, which means they established scenic highway corridors and Carefree Highway is part of the scenic highway corridor. So they're exempted from the billboards at that location as well as the illumination. So I think that's a, a win for the town. Okay, that's really all I had for tonight. There's been a lot going on and we have CIP tonight. I think we can, might take some time.
You know, y'all, y'all let me take stuff out of order. So let, let me, let's just do the consent agenda first. And approval of the December 20th, 2021 regular council meeting minutes. We have a motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I certainly have it. Now I'm going to be really nice. Got to move on to agenda item number one first, which is council discussion approval of resolution R 2022 dash zero one, continue the 2022 Cave Creek Local Landmarks Program to recognize significant places in the town of Cave Creek and awarding additional 10 recipients of bronze plaque. Mr. Kautzman, say after
Thank you.
almost 20 years, I'll learn to say your name right.
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor. It's not my birthday till April, but I appreciate it. As the digital communication specialist Kelly Francis and myself gave a report to council at the last meeting of 2021 regarding the status and, and work to date on the local landmarks program. Before you this evening is a resolution which if adopted would continue to allocate resources to the local landmarks. Staff upon soliciting input from the public and gathering nominations for this year's group of recipients proceeded to meet with members from the Cave Creek Museum in which we took those list of nominations and whittled them down to 10 appropriate locations that we feel council should consider for recognition this year. It's important to note that we do have the budgeted funds necessary to continue this program programmed in this year's fiscal budget. So no additional funding is, is necessary. Just to real quickly list the 10 recipients. You were given the list of nominations that are report in December. But this year we are asking that through the approval of the possible resolution that American Legion Post 34, Black Mountain Tac and Feed, the Buffalo Chip, Cave Creek Museum, Desert Foothills Library, Ellen Cantor, Frontier Town, Horny Toad, Indian Village, and La San Souci would be recognized this year, much like we did with the initial six last year. We would do a, we would work with the business owner to promote an event surrounding the recognition and awarding of, of the brass plaque. We already have worked out the ordering of the brass plaque should council approve this. And we will be working with representatives from the Cave Creek Museum to craft the narrative language that goes on those brass plaques and update the map accordingly over time. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Question from council.
I have one question. I recognized all the buildings, of course, but the Desert Foothills Library. How is that a historical building?
Well, we look at criteria such as what, you know, what public good does it create and instill their, their communication with the public, their outreach?
Oh, so it doesn't necessarily have to do anything with how old they are?
Not at all.
Okay.
Not at all. It's, it's really just a
My question. Okay. The value to the community.
That is correct.
Yes.
Yeah.
Former, former Vice Mayor Sova.
I have a comment more so than a question as the only veteran on the council. And I see some veterans in the audience, Mr. Elkamai, no, Mr. Sims. I apologize if there's others and I missed them, but I was very happy and pleased to see that the American Legion Post 34 here in Cave Creek is on the list. Especially because this is the 75th anniversary of the post. And they will be having special events throughout the year. And with that being said, I'd like to ask the town through the communications department. And I'll have the Legion send over information as special events that they're going to host throughout the year to please put it on the town website and in any mailings we do or whatever. I think it's very, very important. And it started in 1947, which is 75 years ago with Al Morgan Hall, which is the original building in the back. And then I, you'd have to help me, Luke. The new building was done maybe 14, 15 years ago.
Perfect.
Councilman McGuire and I worked on the issue with the easement in front vis a vis the fees that were lurking out there remaining to be paid, and we worked that out. So I just want to thank my fellow veterans and encourage everybody to take part in the events. They're going to have Medal of Honor winners come out there and talk. There's plans of trying to get some flyovers from Luke Air Force Base and other events. So once again, glad to see it on the list and thank you.
Can we follow up?
Yeah. We're really, really, we need to, is there a question? I should have stopped him before he got that far into it, but.
Well, okay, I'll pose it as a question. Perhaps we could coordinate our local landmarks recognition with one of their already scheduled anniversary events.
And that, and that is the goal with all of these locations.
There is public comment on this one.
No comment.
All right, we're back to council for a motion, please. Former Vice Mayor Sova, would you like to do the motion?
It'd be an honor.
Yeah.
A motion to approve resolution R 2022 dash zero one, a resolution of the mayor and town council of the town of Cave Creek, Arizona, authorizing continuation of the 2022 Cave Creek Local Landmarks Program to recognize significant places in the town of Cave Creek and awarding an additional 10 tenant perin recipients of a bronze plaque.
A second.
I think I've heard your comments.
I have one more to add.
Go right ahead then.
The reason I think it's important that the town recognizes Legion Post 34 is all the good they do. Everything they do is to help veterans that are in need of various things coming back from areas throughout the world and their families. And it's a good organization that does good things to help the veterans. And I'll get on my political stool, something that this country doesn't do enough of. So I'll get off now. Thank you.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yeah, we, many of our committees and commissions are meeting before the public and before the council. And I've become aware of a number of people who have contributed to this effort that we don't see. And I hope they will take pride in the service that they have committed to Cave Creek.
Any other comments from council? I just got one, you know, two years ago, we had L-bats flying over town dumping, dumping slurry. If you're having flyovers now, I hope I don't have to build a bomb shelter. This is, this is, uh, this is financial because each one of those plaques costs money. So let's go ahead and do a roll on this one.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Deefenderfer.
Yes.
Councilmember Sova.
Yes.
Councilmember Roy A.
Yes.
Mayor Bunch.
Uh, yes, motion carries seven zero. Good to see that happening. Okay, now we're going to move back to our non-action item, which is presentation of the draft fiscal year 23 through 27, five-year capital improvement program, current CIP and discussion with town council. Are we not ready?
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes. More or less.
Our water attorney, Michelle Van Quatham is on the phone to answer any questions about the last item on the general agenda for voting. Did you want to?
Okay. Okay, we'll back up. We'll go do that one and get out, get out of the way and we'll let her enjoy her evening. We're going to move on to agenda item number two, which is council discussion approval of a water service agreement with Quick Trip Corporation to provide water service in Desert Hills.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The action before you tonight is the water service agreement. When last meeting in December, the council adopted a new water resources policy. As part of that resolution, we talked about a transition period to allow us to clean up some projects. This happens to be one of them. So in the fall, we became aware of a project at Seventh Street, north, the east corner, Seventh Street and Carefree Highway and, and our Desert Hill Service Area where a three acre property was purchased to put in a new Quick Trip Gas Convenience Store. As we were wrapping up our, our water resources policy, we engaged in a discussion with Quick Trip. We discussed the water needs for that development. And we elected to move forward with putting together a contract, which is what's before you tonight. The two things that are unique about this is we did limit them to currently the contract limits them to a one inch water meter. And while the water policy has a volumetric limit and it's typically half an acre foot. In this case, we've allowed for one and a half acre feet, so three acre property. And prior to this development moving forward, they actually would have been moving ahead to Miracopa County and getting building permits by this point. But they elected to, to stop and work with us on this contract to put this water service agreement in place. The, the, the one inch meter that would have been allowed over the old water policy would have allowed them to, to consume a lot more than one and a half acre feet of water. So we actually looked at the information. I'm sorry, it's sort of the way it printed out, but we got some information on four other stores that they have in the valley about how much water they can use. And it's considerable amount, if including indoor and outdoor can be over three, three and a half acre feet a year. So we thought by limiting them to one and a half acre feet was a good use of the town's overall water resources. Again, we think this, we treat this as sort of a transition project. We knew about it prior to the water policy being adopted. And we thought that it'd be best to actually enter into the contract. It's a contract's good for three years, but they're actually ready to go to Miracopa County and obtain their building permits and construct this project. So with that, I can answer any question. The applicant is actually here tonight, too. If you, council wants to ask any questions of him also.
Councilman Morris?
How do you enforce it?
We'll just have to track water usage. So as, as policy moves forward, this is something we'll have to look at. We can look at the water bills. And in fact, and it is tracked them. And as they approach the volumetric quantity, if we think that they're getting close to that, we can reach out to them. The agreement allows us to discuss that with them. We can send them a notice that we, we think they're going to exceed that amount for that annual basis. And they have to give us a recommendation as far as how they could pull back and not use that much water. So contractually, we could basically say they, if they exceed that amount, we have rights to say that they're violation and we can pull their water meter at the end of the day, which would obviously shut their business down, but obviously the town's friends protect our water resources.
Michelle, is Bob Morris, how? We, would we ever take that drastic inaction? Have people taken that drastic inaction with overconsumption of water? Is that something that can be done? Pulling their meter?
If there's an agreement about that amount, then you could go through the agreement remedies, which would be, you know, typically anything that, that an agreement can be done. You can ask for injunctions. You can ask for damages and you can ask ultimately to invalidate the agreement. So it would be up to the council at that point, based on the facts at that point.
Michelle, could I jump in? And I apologize through the mask. I asked that very same question to Michelle. And you also have specific performance. I mean, you could actually measure this and make them comply before you go to the extreme of pulling the meter. Make them reduce consumption to that to conform with their contractual obligation.
So, so are you going to set up a, a monitoring? You know, and I'm looking at this and say that's, that's extra administrative work to do this, and you don't want to do it month by month. I mean, but it's some.
Well, council, mayor, council member, we can look at that. So this being the one service agreement right now, we can set this up and we can have the, we can hold meter information monthly. If we get more of these, you know, we can look at that, but we, this one would be too hard to administer. If we wanted to do a lot more, that would become a large administrative burden. But looking at one account and pulling that information monthly and just tracking that, you know, we have other accounts that we look at and we track at too, for other reasons.
Thank you.
So.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Sova.
It may be in the agreement. I'm not sure, but I always like to see an agreement that where it has a provision in it that we're only going to give you this much. I think, what was it? Half an acre foot, I believe?
It's actually in section 2.1.1. A single currently something to a single one inch water meter and one and a half acre feet per year of water.
But is, I would ask this of Attorney Sims also, is it not better and more prudent to put language in now, knowing that if they exceed it, their meter will be pulled immediately? Or that there'll be a fine that'll go up accordingly for every day that they exceed it to where they know what the penalty is. And I suggest it be very strong and stringent and enforceable instead of negotiating something when the event happens.
You, but then councilmember Sova, you run into councilmembers Morris's concern. That is, that is a draconian response. The better response is to get them to perform, but I agree with you. And this is a question I asked Michelle and she should jump in.
Right.
My, my view is you measure it. If they don't perform, you then bring a claim to make them perform. If they then don't perform, there is no, there are no penalties in here. It would be taking the meter, but that would be a last resort. Michelle, you should help me here.
Yes, under section 7.6 of the agreement, the, the town, if it believes there's a default in the agreement, which would be the overage, will provide written notice to QT. And at that point, you can elect to give them the amount of time that's spelled out in the agreement to perform. Or, you know, negotiate some sort of compliance plan with them so that they can perform, which is usually the way that you want things to, to work out. And then if there is non-performance that continues, you have the right under the contract to end it.
That would be a last resort. Meeting with the property owner and getting them to perform.
Councilman McGuire.
The average homeowner, I believe, uses one third to half an acre foot of water per year. What would be the use that this applicant makes that brings it up to a potential of one and a half acre feet per year?
Really, we got that information. A, it's a commercial property. It's almost three acres in size. We looked at, they actually gave us historic data at other sites. We actually looked across the street. There's actually existing Burger King, which is has similar features, a restaurant with convenience store. And we looked at their meter usage and they're using about two and a half acre feet right now of water. So it's just, it's this type of usage, this convenience type of usage that's using this water. So working with the applicant, they're agreeable to, to try and minimize their use more so than they have. Look at the landscaping requirements and just general practices. They have some practices like power washing the site, they cleanliness, things like that. So if they, they limit the amount of power washing that they do, that will reduce the overall water consumption. But these types of uses, I was actually a little surprised myself when I saw the numbers initially and then, but then when I looked at, there's a Four Sons across the street, similar usage, a little bit less. It's hard to compare that one because there's actually an office building that's also attached to the same water meter. But when I looked immediately across the street at the Burger King with very similar usage, I was surprised that they're using about that much water. These types of applicants usage.
I don't see my council asking more questions. I'm wondering if they're going to be able to get to one and a half when you've got a two and a half across the street like that. That's kind of interesting. You, you said you compared some of their other sites that were.
Then again, in the, in the package, you'll see there's a table, which gives us, we'd ask for information because again, in a water resource standpoint, it's sometimes hard. You can use some rules of thumb. The best rule of thumb is actually just using comparable sites. That's what they gave us is comparable information and comparable sites. So the other sites were again about acre foot of landscaping, of just landscaping, outdoor landscaping. So you get down about two and a half. If you minimize your outdoor landscaping, go to more zero escaping, not zero, but zero escaping. And then it's, then they'll have to do some other exercises to get below that. So I do think it'll be a bit of a challenge for them, but it's something that I think we have to agree to moving forward.
It would almost seem to me that a remedy rather than pulling their meter, if they go over, is it, is it they contractually have to go out and get rights to, to whatever they're going to be using. Give a timeframe to, to allow that. Mr. Sims, Michelle, does that make any sense?
That, that would be an option, but, but I guess questions you're asking really are germane to the overall water ordinance.
Yeah.
You now have imposed volumetric restrictions across the board. So this will be a test case to force your staff to monitor the question Mr. Morris asked, and then to come up with responses with pulling the meter being the last resort. Truly negotiating a solution is the better resource. You have, your other alternative is to bring, to bring water.
Right.
But, but I guess my sense is you now have embarked on a path in large part generated from the water committee from before to impose volumetric. We now have to see if it can work.
Yep. All right. Yeah. So that, so that could be negotiated if, if, if acquiring, acquiring rights to wet water could be negotiated before actual putting them out of, you know. There is public comment on this one or?
We have one speaker, Daniel Chambers.
We don't want to hear from him.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Daniel Chambers and I office out of 1116 East Broadway. Broadway Road, Tempe, Arizona. I work for Quick Trip. I'm working on this project, helping develop it, working with the, the staff, city staff and everything. And I'm here to answer any questions if you guys had any questions. But to answer your overall question, it's not in our best interest to go over the limits in the agreement. I know you guys were talking about, and it's not in our best interest to do that. So.
Councilman, a question for you. So I'm sitting here looking at, at these stations that are running at 3.3, 3.5 years to 49,000 gallons a month outside. Just in the outside, which is, you know, that's four houses. And so we're trying to supply water for our houses. And, and business too, but you fully intend to comply with this, don't you?
Yes, that's why we're here. We want to comply. We want to be a good neighbor. We don't want to sign a contract and then break a contract and be in constant battle with you guys. That doesn't do us as any good as a business and it doesn't do you guys any good. Quick Trip is very much long-term focused. We like to be a part of the community when we go into a place where we're there for a long time. We plan on being here for a while. We're going to work with you guys a lot in the future. And there's no, no reason to start it off on the bad foot because then it, that's just not good business. To answer your question, we've been working with the county. The county is the one who sets our landscape requirements. So we are in the process of working with them, trying to reduce it. As Mr. Sean stated, we've been working with our internal design folks and our building folks and our architect and our mechanical engineers, different ways that we can reduce it. How can we reuse any gray water? What can we do with irrigation? What can we do with the fixtures that we have? So this is, this is not ideal. This is a lot of work on our end to try to get us down to this, this number, but it's something that we're committed to. We're very excited about the storm being part of the community and we want, we want to continue with that. And these are the, the limits that we have. And so we have to find a way to make them work within it. So that's what we've been doing. We've been, we have a meeting next week and everything's on the table. How can we, what can we do? Any idea?
That's a great answer. I appreciate your, I appreciate the effort you're putting into this. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for your consideration.
Councilman McGuire, you have a question?
Yes. As, as a geologist, I think rocks are awfully pretty. Have you made plans to do zero escaping? They don't use much water.
That is, that is true. But right now, as I said, that the county is the one who controls our landscape requirements. So we can't deviate without their permission. So we have multiple jurisdictions that we're working with to try to get this done. So.
But you can't ask.
We, we can ask and we're trying in the process of getting a meeting with the holidays coming, with the holidays that just happened. It was, I was unable to get a meeting set up to talk to him about it. If you guys have any pull with Miracopa County, I would love to talk to you after this. But it is something that we are, we, we have to look at. That is one of the things that Sean mentioned. We typically power wash every site a couple of times a week. That is something that we're having to forego with this lot. To save water, that's another water savings that we do. We have to do that in some of our other markets that have other water restrictions on us. So there is things that we have and we are looking at it. And I think one of the byproducts is we're going to have a very green, green building from a water standpoint. So.
That's a good thing.
I don't. Anything else, any other council members? All right, we're back to council for a motion, please.
This is a motion to approve a water service agreement with Quick Trip Corporation to provide water service in Desert Hills.
Second.
Comments, Councilman?
No, good, good discussion. I like this.
My only, my only comment would be that most water usage is wasted outside, even in homes. Their, their highest use of water that doesn't need to be used is exterior. So I agree that you really need to think about zero escaping as your option to save water here.
Yes, and we would, we would love to do that, but we are currently governed by what Miracopa County says. So that's something that we're going to talk with them.
And yeah, they need to get on the program too, because obviously we're in a drought here and have been for 20 plus years.
And I, I have a feeling that.
It's not conducive to any of us to ignore the fact that we need to conserve water.
I have a feeling that I might need to pull Sean into a meeting with them here at some point to talk about this. So.
He's got a lot of power down there.
I didn't hear that, sir.
He has a lot of power down there. So.
I, I don't, but we have been in conversation with the county in regards to the water policy. So there, we've been talking to them. We've actually had a couple of meetings with them and sent them emails. But they're aware that the policy has, has been passed.
Councilman Sova, you had this, or you, yeah, you had this.
Yes.
Yeah.
I, I just wanted to say I'm going to support the motion, even though I'm a firm believer in draconian law and the results that it produces. So I might challenge perhaps Mr. Sims, but I come from a different environment.
Any, any other comments from council? You know, I understand, I understand this is a transition project that is, is in between and there's, this is the only one of them to my knowledge. So this won't be happening again. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven zero. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Now we will move back to the non-action item, which is presentation of the draft fiscal year 23 through 27, five-year capital improvement program, current CIP and discussion with town council.
Mayor, Vice Mayor and members of council, tonight, this item is an introduction of the draft Capital Improvement Program that is for fiscal years 23 through 27. This is an opportunity for staff to have a conversation with the council members and take input since it's in draft form. We will be back with an actual Capital Improvement Program book that like we prepared, that's currently the current CIP that will have a more final draft that will be subject to public comment and discussion and eventually council approval. So. And eventually council approval. So this is just the initial introduction. I thought I would take a little bit of time to kind of go over the spreadsheet. Brian, you might want to bring up the, the all projects CIP. It's really hard to see in the book and I know the council has the larger Excel sheet. It would be on page seven of the, of the packet. In cases, any questions, but I know the council has a large document. So the way this is laid out on page seven, which is the large spreadsheet that we provided the council in your packet. We listed all of the projects by department. And the departments then to the left of the project title are prioritized. And then to the left of that is the funding source. And I thought I'd just cover that because I've had some questions about that. In the, in the utilities, so the first four sections on utilities are broken out by cave creek water, desert hills, wastewater, and then the water resources. You'll see cash. And then at the very top line, it says CF two million. And then further down, you'll say PY carry forward. Basically, we've tried to identify where there's a carry forward from this current fiscal year of a project that's connected. Either it won't be completed by the end of the fiscal year, or we won't make complete payment by the end of this fiscal year. So we need to carry that forward into the capital improvement program for next year. So CF two M is carry forward two million dollars. And then below that, on the far left, it says PY carry forward. So that stands for prior year carry forward. Okay, just to clarify that. And then we tried to identify the funding in the budget. And when we say cash for utilities, we're assuming cash either covered by the utility funds. Or there are two projects, the Phoenix Water Interconnect and the water treatment plant upgrades for the pall membranes that Sean will take time and go over and give you the updates on that. But those are the projects clearly identified for principle and interest of the utility rates covering those projects. So all of those are intended to be covered by the utility rates. The utility rate discussion is coming very soon in the next maybe three weeks or so. And so we'll go over that in detail, but we want the projects in front of you first. If you get down to building, those are identified as projects that we would do with grant funding and/or matching funds from the general fund. Under Public Works Streets, the very first item is a Desert Awareness Park Galloway Wash. That is a project that was in this fiscal year, there was funding enough for the design engineering. So when you see six hundred and fifty thousand, that is identified as the project for construction. We do not have funds for that currently and we intend to apply for a grant. So we carry forward those funds, the six hundred and fifty thousand. But we also intend to apply for grants to cover those costs. So that would not have an impact on the general fund income, the, the revenues coming in. Following that are the HERF related projects. We estimated maybe a little too high, but we estimated four hundred thousand dollars of HERF funds coming in. It, it has been declining over the years, but when you look at the total taking out, you know, year one, take out that six hundred and fifty thousand, you've got about four hundred thousand of HERF funds that would cover it. The remaining funds would need to come from the general fund for all of the HERF funds. The projects that are listed in Public Works for HERF are following the five-year pavement management program that the council approved. So we, we have the pavement management program. And that goes over a five-year period. And as you get into the five-year period, you'll see where we're going to do an update to the pavement management program. I can tell you this year and in prior years, we have not funded one hundred percent of the annual pavement management program. So all of the programs that are listed are in there now. But if we, if you, if you don't fund all of it, I mean, that would be funding from, from the general fund. So it's a big hit on the general fund monies when you talk about road projects. When you get to planning and zoning the trails, we have a prior year carry forward with Surrey Drive pedestrian crossing. And the planning director will go over that. And then we have grant funding for, I think some of those projects or a portion of those projects. Fire protection, we carried, that is again, fire prior year carry forward. So there are, there are projects that were in plan for the next four to five years, but we had to carry forward. For example, the vehicle, we ordered the vehicle, it's approved for purchase, but we have to pay for it in next fiscal year's budget. Okay. So that, that's where you find some of those things. And then when we get to the summaries, I can clarify, but basically the total carry forward, the four point eight million at the bottom. We tried to summarize that. So you kind of gives you an idea. So the carry forward could be revenues from grants. It could be utilities, et cetera. But we wanted you to know what the carry forward projects are and their totals. And we did a summary of utility projects and what the costs are. And some of the utility projects are actually in the carry forward and then others are in HERF. So there's, that summarizes that. And I can get into more detail. I have a sheet on that. So with that said, if you would like, we could move forward with presentations from the directors. Their plan is to really give an update of what's new. Either what's carried forward from this year and why, and, and what's new to the CIP that maybe wasn't in the current CIP or what's, what adjustments have been made. And then the last point I'd like to make is the engineer, public works director is available by phone for another twenty minutes. So if you'd like to go to ask, have him answer any questions you might have about Public Works Streets projects, I can get him on the phone. We're, we're ready and available to do that. So you could talk with Hal.
I don't want that, but I want to ask the town manager a question or two.
Okay. If you don't, I just wanted to make sure if you needed something specific for Hal, I'll put.
Public Works for twenty more minutes and then he's not available because he's going to be in a aluminum tube.
Yeah. I'd be happy to answer any of the questions.
Sir, any questions for Hal first? We need to get him on the phone.
Well, yeah, I, I think the key questions are down. We've, we've got one point two million dollars more money than we have coming in from HERF. I mean, that's one of the big.
Yes.
Elephants in the room. Can we afford all that money? And what, what's critical and what can be delayed? That's just.
What, well, Mayor, council member, we're trying to sort of make the point that it runs about a million to a million two to keep up with your pavement management program. If you want to be on track, that's what it costs for the public works. And her funding is going down. So either we postpone projects, which we can do. And he did, he did. He has prioritized them by year that's in the pavement management program. So we can make those adjustments and push some projects out. It just, we, we're not completing a hundred percent for each year that's in the program as was approved by council.
Well, it, it just seems to me like there's just way too much spending that we, that we're, we have what eleven million dollars revenue coming in roughly, eleven, twelve million dollars in the general fund. And if we can borrow, that's the other big elephant. If we can borrow money for the water projects.
Right.
That goes a long ways towards keeping both water rates low and balancing this and makes money available for the general fund that used to go to water. What's missing here is a big picture where these funds, you know, we're in, we're down in the weeds here before we've seen the big picture. Are we going to get the money for loans? I mean, I, yeah, the payment plan is fine, but it's got to be funded. And if it's not funded, is that what we want to use the town's savings for? We have, we have a net balance, but some of that's going to go to buy fire engines and other things. So it's very difficult for me to sit here and it's impossible for me to sit here and put these numbers together into a big picture that makes sense. We're down into the weeds and where everything looks good. But the, the, it's got to add up in the end and that adding up in the end, and with the options to make it add up are what's critical about this.
Mayor, council member, the intent with the rate study is to either take loans or revenue bonds and, or budget for the projects that are paid by the utility revenues. And so either the projects get cut so that you can keep the rates at a reasonable amount. But, but when we did the fiscal or the financial economic forecast for the town, for the fire, we have no intention past this fiscal year of funding utility projects with general fund monies. That was the, the main premise of that, that the, the utilities must pay for themselves with a couple of exceptions. And that was the wastewater, I think there was about four hundred thousand for operating expense that would, was put in the model that we would continue to pay that until the loans are paid out. And there were a couple of other little things. So we intend to stick with that. And when we come forward with discussions about the assumptions in the utility rates and where we are, that, that is the intention of working through that process to have the utilities cover the capital projects.
And in the last rate exercise, we had a number in there that I have forgotten. Maybe you remember for the average of the five-year projects, we took the total amount of CIP funding divided by five, and that number was the input to the rate determination program.
Right. But now we're looking at the financing. So we were, we were putting in the financial forecast, the PNI for at least half of the total capital.
So there's a very good chance that rates are not going to be severely affected. Is that, that's kind of my.
Well.
And not having numbers in front of me, that's my feel.
That was the intent that we, we worked, we worked with the, with Willden and the rates before we came to you with the financial forecast, the economic forecast and that, so that we had certain assumptions there and what the PNI would be and what they ran all those models. And Mr. Rounds was talking to Kevin Burnett and Sean was there and I was there. So we had that whole discussion. So I think when we get to the, to the rate study and what the assumptions are, then we're going to talk about all of that. But the intent was that it would cover the projects for the capital projects for the utilities.
Are you confident that we can borrow the money for the utilities?
If we have the rates to cover the PNI, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that's the intent. I think the vice mayor had a question too.
Is it all my councilman Morris?
Yes.
Councilman McGuire.
Our cost of operating and repairing our roads are clearly going up. Why are the HERF funds going down?
I think our interim finance director can actually answer that question. We had that discussion, but he got into the weeds for me.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that HERF funds are based on the gasoline taxes that are, that are collected by the state and then they're distributed to counties and cities based on their population. As more and more people buy electric cars, the fewer few people buy gasoline, naturally the number of gallons sold goes down. The tax is a, is a set amount per gallon. And so the tax revenues go down. So in a, in a way, people that drive electric cars aren't helping to pave roads, things like that. So.
Thank you.
Tell us your question.
Vice Mayor.
A month or so ago, we, we went through a, a program of, as you mentioned, reviewing all of the outstanding obligations of town, the money that we had on hand and what was projected for the future. After all of that hoopla, there was a convincing argument to the council that we would be able to afford everything that would be involved in the fire program. And that we'd also be able to do everything else that we had anticipated, previously anticipated. So I'm, I'm pretty well set with that. I have the same concern that council member Morris has that this, this is not a totally definitive document. It, I looked, I looked through all of it and I said, wait a minute. There's stuff we threw out of the budget last year. Same thing that we threw out of the budget the year before and the year before and the year before. So there's a lot of, and it's more than one. There's a lot of stuff in here that is not going to be in the final budget. And it's not going to be in the budget after that, simply because we won't be able to afford it. What I would hope is that we end up with a capital improvement program that is concomitant with the results of the study that was done for the, the council and the public a couple of months ago. I don't, I don't see it here yet. So I could go through this and I'd say toss it, toss it, toss it, toss it. Oh no, we need that. We need this, we need this. And that would be, you know, probably something as good as anybody else could do. I am concerned about the, the, the concept that we based everything on, which is funding capital projects through debt. And I have, I, I looked through here and I couldn't quite put it together, come up with a package that says this, 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 and this. It's, I assume it's somewhere around sixteen to eighteen million dollars over a couple of years. And that's what we had bought into.
Utilities, you're talking about the utility debt?
Debt, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And as long as that works, I'm perfectly happy. I just don't want to see in the eventual laundry list of capital improvement projects items that we, we have to spend a lot of time deliberating on to get rid of them. And so I'm, I'm hoping staff will take another close look at some of the items on here and not try to move them forward during budget time.
Okay. The, I could just say the only thing that is different in terms of the numbers used in the financial forecast is the public works. That we have always budgeted about seventy-five percent of what our program is. So that this shows all of the projects for all the years. That's the, that's the main difference in this because I don't believe you've ever seen all of the projects all at one time listed in the pavement management program. I'm not sure they were all there because there are things I haven't seen. And so I'm not saying that all these get funded, but you should at least see them and have a discussion with Hal and me about the priorities.
I, I think that's a good idea. But one of the things that council member brought, Morris brought up is the fact that there are things here which are probably important, like the roads that have not, have not really been considered budgetarily yet.
Right.
And we're going, we always end up with a ton of these things. We've, we've seen a lot of sewer money over the past that we've already agreed to and that. over the past uh, that we've already agreed to and that will be coming up in the future. There will be a lot of other things that are unknowns. One of the concerns I have is how much wiggle room. I, I, I know that we have the uh, the set aside so that we can uh, uh, the uh, yeah, the, that. I always forget the name. That, so that we can accommodate certain things.
Right.
And um, so I'm, I'm, I just wanted to express that concern that as we move along on this, I would really like to see this pared down to the ones that are a hundred and fifty percent practical. Like a basketball coach. Uh, they get hundred and fifty percent. Okay. Uh, I, I'd just like to see them being the ones that are the most practical and the ones that are most needed by the town.
Councilmember Oye.
No, trails are under uh, planning and zoning trails. There's a separate category for that. Those are all streets. Yes. Yes.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yeah, I'd like to point out that there's a difference between budgeting and expenditures. And if we don't budget it, we can't spend it. If we don't have the money, then we don't spend it. But just because it's in the budget doesn't mean that it gets expended.
Are you, are you gonna chastise him for saying things like concomitant or whatever it was?
I tried to look it up. I, I don't even know how to spell it.
Yeah, that was a problem.
No, I, I'd just like to say, I, I think what we were presented is excellent. Uh, when, when you start out on a, a project like this, it's good to have it as a wish list and have everything on there that you'd like to have. And I, I agree with our Vice Mayor and Councilmember Morris that it needs to be whittled down, but in order to whittle it, you have to start with something. And uh, my feeling is, you know, I look at this as a potential budget. And a budget is not a license to spend money. It's the best guess as to what something's gonna cost based on the facts and figures that you have at that, at this period in time. And it's always subject to change. Life is that way.
I like that best guess. That's why we won the budget award this past year.
We guessed good.
The other
We all made a best guess.
All the other cities and towns obviously didn't guess this.
I actually think the budget process was relatively rigorous. And that's one of the reasons why I think it was awardable. Uh, and the, you know, the best guess aspect is when you say a million dollars for grants. That's a best guess. And over a wish list, a, a true wish list.
Well, I, I would disagree with you. I, I agree with your statement, but whenever you put a number on a piece of paper and it's for several years in the future, you don't control the economy. You don't control what's gonna happen. It's totally unexpected. Therefore, it's a best guess based on the unknowns.
Big argument here. I'm sorry. I was talking about budgets, not future prognostication.
Well, a, a, a future project is based on a budget.
This is one of those things that uh, is not gaining anybody anything.
Brian, how many people we got online watching this? Oh, that's good. I'm thrilled.
If there are, are no other questions, we thought we'd have the directors, um, starting with the utility director go through um, the projects and the ranking and explain why they
Yeah, I do have a question for Hal.
Okay.
On this budget, we have a uh, I, I'm, I'm, we have a safety project, which ought to be sanctimonious on the top of the list. That's a hundred thousand dollars per year in Hal's budget. Then we have the Surrey Drive pedestrian crossing for a hundred and five thousand down in the, down in planning and zoning. Why aren't those, why isn't that being prioritized with the safety projects and um, and why is a safety pri- a hundred thousand dollars seems very unscientific uh, per year. If it truly is safety, it ought to be up somewhere near the top and it ought to be maybe more specific.
Yeah, I thought Luke can answer that.
The um, so first of all, with, with the CIP and the planning department, uh, we used to have three projects. We actually eliminated um, one of, we were proposing to do a crosswalk here. And after the pedestrian traffic uh, study that was done, uh, we found that there wasn't a warrant for a crosswalk here. So that's been eliminated from the, the CIP. Uh, so now we just have the two projects. The Surrey Drive Crossing is um, a combination of engineering funding, the planning uh, trails, budgetary funding as well as a uh, grant hopefully from uh, Maricopa County. So the project would be co-managed by, by Hal and myself.
Well, that, that explains the departmental organization. But what about, is it being prioritized with the uh, pedestrian safety study that we all got copies of that says we have things in town that ought to be changed? And uh, how much can we afford of that? And it, does that make the list in comparison to those projects? That's, that's my, it's which project is, is the higher priority? That's, that's my issue.
Of, for as far as Hal's CIP goes, his priority rank.
It ought to be in there. In my view, the, all the pedestrian stuff ought to be in one, one pot and prioritize together and scheduled together based on the need and the safety aspect.
Okay.
That's.
Uh, Mayor and Councilmember, we could do that, but in terms of budgeting, it's broken up by department based on where the funding is coming from. So that's really, I mean, we could categorize that and maybe explain it differently in a project and then separate out the funding.
I don't care where it is. I, I just, the, the, it's the management process, making sure that we're doing the right thing on safety is what concerns.
Yeah, okay. We'll start with the, I mean, with Sean.
Like, like I say, the next victim.
Well, Sean's got most of the money, right?
You know, if y'all just take a look at these numbers, between Sean and Jim, they spend more money.
I'd like to tell Jim if there's no fire hydrants or water. It can make his job a lot harder. Thank you, Mayor and Council. As um, Carrie indicated, I'll just try and do a quick overview because I know we have a lot of projects and really highlight the differences uh, from last year's adopted CIP because uh, uh, most of these projects were in last year's capital improvement programs. Uh, the first project, uh, and I'll start with Cave Creek Water is the City of Phoenix Interconnect. Uh, we're moving ahead with that project. Uh, we've just pushed out some money. We, uh, we thought we could get under construction this year. Uh, we're just at the thirty percent design level. So we're gonna try and get a construction manager awarded. So I've asked to have some of the money carried forward, about two million dollars to next year with most of the construction activity starting next fiscal year. Uh, that's obviously a, a key priority to get that project completed for the town. Um, the next project, I'm going to go down just on the list, not by priorities, but is the cat booster station upgrade. So the we've indicated that the year after we get the Phoenix Interconnect onboard uh, and functioning running, we actually have an opportunity to take the, the CAP line offline at certain times. So probably there looks like right now it's about uh, two to three months window in, in the um, the winter time when flows are low enough that we could run the system off of City Phoenix Interconnect and uh, it would allow us to do significant work on the pipelines and the pump stations themselves, and more importantly.
So shutting, shutting it down and working on it for months at a time, is that?
I'm not sure about months, but maybe, you know, gives us more than just a, a short one-day window to pull a pump or do some work. Some of the uh, booster pump stations, obviously, we had elected, we had started a project not too long ago, which was looking at to completely upgrade those sites and bring them up upgrade. Um, there's some others issues that we can deal with, like taking out the pumps and there's some broken valves inside the vaults that we can get down into. So yeah, we could look at actually shutting off the pipelines for, for a month or more, allowing a contractor to get scheduled to get some work in and working on the site.
Won't that allow for, for more uh, quagga muscle development in static lines that where water's not going?
We'll have to look at that. And again, as part of the old project, we actually did look at doing an injection um, at, at the CAP uh, booster pump station cap, what we refer to as cap one at the cap canal to do something to control the quagga muscle. So if there might get some settlement out, there might be something we can back throughout at the different sites. So it's something we manage. But the bigger thing is, you know, we haven't been able to go out and, and for a significant period of time, you know, besides for, you know, since I've been here, we've had a couple of emergencies where we've had like a twelve-hour window where we've had to shut the pipeline off, that we could program some work, get into a vault, uh, get onto the pipelines, uh, do air relief valve repairs and other stuff. So this, this is money set aside to allow us to start that process. And it's really geared towards a year after we get the City of Phoenix Interconnect, that next winter gives us some opportunity to plan some work, get some work done.
Well, those, those will adhere to the interior of that, that pipe, will they?
Um, the AC lines yet, we, you know, the few times I've seen the inside of a pipe, we haven't seen any of that.
Because water's always moving.
Yeah, yeah. We will have to look at that again. It might push the issue of, of maybe doing a chemical injection before that and
Yeah, okay. Yeah, you could, yeah, you could do that. Make sure they don't grow in there when you're not moving water. Okay. I just had to ask that question because I see what they do to the speed of a boat.
Not good. Um, so uh, we've, yeah, next project is their integrated master plan. I've asked for a little bit of money to be carried forward. We're just starting the selection process with consultants and getting that out on the street. So we won't expend all the dollars before the end of this fiscal year. So the thought would be we carry over some of this year's money to allow us to, to wrap that project and complete the work. You'll see that in all three of the utility funds. Uh, we have a water treatment plant maintenance. We have some money this year. The goal is we're doing some upgrades at the sites uh, just to clean up some stuff. When we, the palm membranes were installed about two years ago, it was a quick project and we've got some cleanup work to do at that site. Um, uh, rearranging some chemicals, totes, uh, rearranging some of the pipe work on the site. So this gives us some opportunities to do some of that work. And again, we have some monies right now. We're working on a scope work with a job order contractor to do some work and, and we can continue that next year. Uh, we have one, the next project is the eight-inch water line with Continental Mountain Estates. That's actually tied to a development agreement. We've actually had some initial conversations with that developer about pushing out uh, and, and we're changing that development agreement. So Continental Mountain Estates, I forget the total number of lots, uh, but they're bound to um, uh, improve what we refer to as our pressure zone nine and actually put in a booster pump station at a Rockaway reservoir site that allow them to get fire flow. The problem is that that site is being constrained also by a six-inch water line that, that then leads up to development itself. So the development agreement said that the town would actually build the eight-inch water lines needed. Um, and then they would, uh, the developers responsible for building the booster pump station. And that would allow for a fire flow up at uh, pressure zone nine to this development. It allows them to uh, put larger homes up there. So at this point, I think one home has been developed. Um, and it actually has a storage, a fire storage tank at the site. And the development agreement allows them to do up to three lots in that configuration. Beyond that, they actually have to stop until they build this. But we've had some conversations with that developer about uh, uh, looking at that agreement. Either pushing it out or changing the obligation a little bit. So. Uh, next project is a backup generator near a booster station. Uh, when we talk about projects that maybe can go away, this is one that right now, the near booster station is critical to the town. All the town, all the water from the town's water treatment plant has to pass for the near booster pump station site. Uh, there are three large fifteen-hundred gallon a minute pumps at that site with some room for two other pumps. The generator uh, can only run to the pumps. We, we think of that as, we refer to that as firm capacity. You'd never actually want to run all three pumps. Uh, but the old master plans talked about actually uh, changing out the generator to a larger one. As the, we can bring on the City of Phoenix Interconnect, uh, Nury is still important to the system. The importance level drops. So maybe that's something we can look at as part of the master plan efforts, looking at the reliability and redundancy of all of our sites and the firm capacity, what we need. But at this point, um, I've left it in. I pushed it out to the last year, the CIP, I pushed it out one year in their capital program at this point. Uh, I think what was more important at the Nury Booster Pump Station is a project that I put in. It's a new project, which is adding some new booster pumps. And as I said, the, the site currently has three large booster pump station, uh, booster pumps. Um, they actually provide most of the fire flow for the town uh, right now. Um, when the new City of Phoenix Interconnect comes online, we're still talking about uh, to utilize the Nury site to provide some fire flow uh, down in southern portion of town or to provide fire flow. Uh, but the, the need to have the larger pumps uh, will, uh, will diminish. Uh, so we can look at putting in some smaller, more efficient pumps. Right now, these pumps do cycle down. Sometimes they go down to five hundred gallons a minute. They're not really meant to go that low. Um, they are on variable frequency drives, but that only allows you to, to drop them uh, uh, certain capacity. But we've done our SCADA system, we're looking at that. So we're looking at adding some smaller pumps just to help the efficiency overall of that station as we move forward and bring the City of Phoenix Interconnect online. Uh, one thing uh, that we found out uh, with when we evaluated uh, uh, bringing the City of Phoenix water in the other year was actually a project um, that's needed at the Rockaway Reservoir, where the Rockaway Reservoir is situated in the system is, is, is at an area where it does can get much movement of water. So we actually have to force the water in and out of that reservoir. As the City of Phoenix water gets brought into the system, uh, we believe we're gonna have a water aging issue at that reservoir. So to eliminate the water aging issue, which actually is gonna lead to um, TTHM uh, formation, we're looking at putting a re- uh, a aeration system, the rechlorination probably less importantly, but the aeration system that actually goes in and actually blows air into the reservoir in the simplest form and blows out uh, what's uh, was referred to as a TTTHMs. One of the byproducts actually forms when, when chlorine uh, sits into CAP water, which has the um, full organic carbons in it, uh, uh, less or more extent. So we're actually gonna actually put a similar aeration system. It's built into the City of Phoenix Interconnect project. So the reservoir we're gonna install down there. But uh, looking at water age, we believe Rockways could have an issue unless we do something. So the, the thought would be that we, in July, we'll start the design of that. And then the following fiscal year, we'll do the construction of that system at that site. So we can still utilize the Rockaway system reservoir site. Uh, no changes for the twelve-inch water line and cloud road, the phase one. Uh, we've broken this project, spent in the capital program for a number of years. Um, referring to phase one is from forty-fourth Street over to, I think it's twenty-sixth Street. When, when we, we look at our distribution system out in the western leg and the entire Cloud Road slash New River uh, project uh, pipelines, an eight-inch pipeline needs to be uh, replaced or repaired or, or upsized to a twelve-inch line. But we, from forty-fourth Street over to twenty-sixth Street, we have a single point of failure in the distribution system. We actually have two crossings of Cave Creek Wash. Um, but we thought that uh, you know, the project itself in total would be, you know, multiple millions of dollars, five to seven million dollars. So this would be the first phase that we need to get done. And it's based on the, really the criticality of the system.
Can I ask you a question? Who, um, that, you say that was gonna cost seven million dollars total?
I think in total, because the pipeline actually needs to be replaced all the way back to Cave Creek Road. So we need to actually do a uh, um, a pipeline. When we looked at the City of Phoenix Interconnect, the modeling scenarios that we looked at showed that we actually need to upsize the eight-inch line from New uh, Cave Creek Road along New River, all the way along New River, across the wash out uh, Cloud Road to get out to the western side. So it's actually, it's the best, it's needed to utilize, the best utilized the City of Phoenix Interconnect in the future. Um, and then it makes sense to actually parallel or replace that line with the eight-inch with a twelve-inch along that entire corridor. So it's a several mile pipeline we're talking.
But, but that, that will not be in this version of the rates, is that correct?
No. Um, I actually put uh, the current rate model we looked at, we actually, I looked at a ten-year CIP. It actually falls in the out five years of the CIP. So when we were discussing that with the um, the consultants, they actually saw that projection in the out years, I believe. I can't remember if I had the entire project in or a portion of the, uh, the out years.
So when, when you looked at that seven billion dollar uh, investment, would you prorate that between the Desert Hills and the Cape Creek Water Company based on water flow rates or some method like that?
We, we could do that. We're actually working on updating the Desert Hills uh, water model right now. So it's actually gonna be integrated with the, the Cave Creek model. When we did the exercise with Black and Beach recently, we, our, our mapping of the Desert Hill system was behind the Cave Creek mapping. So we actually elected just to focus on the, on the Cave Creek system and, and just looked at Desert Hills as a point. I'm actually having Black and Beach as a separate scope of work, actually updated as a hills model. We can do that as analysis.
Well, I'm just, I'm just wondering about who pays for it.
Yeah.
Which, which system pays?
Yeah. Even without that, it's, it's needed when you start looking at the development on the western side of our jurisdiction. When you start looking at, you know, the state land that can be developed out there and being able to provide flow, water flow to the state land development, uh, especially along Carefree Highway where it's actually got a higher zoning entitlement that, you know, the need to move more than an eight-inch uh, uh, inch of pipeline worth of water out to the west end becomes an issue.
I'm, I'm not real excited about having current residents pay for somebody who hasn't even arrived yet.
Yeah.
So.
I agree. So that's something to prioritize again.
When this comes up, I'll be asking questions like, why should I pay for someone who's not even here yet?
At this point, we're looking again, breaking it into phases so that the, the justification would be to replace the most critical section of it. And then we could look at backing our way into, to replace the entire thing. And then again, how do you fund it and how do you proportionally, proportional to cost? So.
In that stretch pipeline, what the most problematic we've got in the whole system as far as breaks go.
Yeah, we actually have another project. It'll come up in a little bit about, yeah, we're trying to actually rehab a small section of it. We've actually had three breaks on the eight inch line on the western bank of Cape Creek Wash in the last uh, just probably less than 18 months. All within about a 500 foot stretch.
Yeah.
All at separate locations within.
You finally quit breaking on the New River roadside over there. Haven't seen one of those in about a year and a half.
The, the, actually the east bank over to 52nd Street was a replacement line.
Yeah.
And then there's a section as you go uh, east uh, uh, continue east of there, there's actually another section of about 80 feet of pipe that actually got replaced too. We actually had a break just a little bit west. So yeah, it's, it's a struggle for us. Um, yeah. But the, the western side has actually been the worst for us recently.
Yeah, there've been times I've wanted to contact game and fish and have them bring us a load of trout.
As long as they pay the water bill, I don't know.
Sean, before you go into, to Desert Hills, I'm not sure if you're moving on there yet.
I got a few more projects.
Yeah. No, I was just going to say at the end, maybe you could, you could summarize the, the projects that will be financed that you've discussed with the rate study when you're done.
Okay. Uh, the Phoenix uh, infrastructure reimbursement, that's, that's uh, the obligation that we have. Um, that'll be the end of the um, reimbursements that we have. So that's, that's based on the I G A that we have in place with Phoenix. Um, the water meter replacement program that we actually had it in the program two years ago, last year, uh, some discussions, council asked that we pull it out but to gather more information. So we've actually gathered more information. So I feel comfortable putting it back in and presenting that. Um, just to, in the last few months, we've actually had some failures in meters and what we're seeing right now is actually failures of the radio antennas. What we refer to as the Ertz and the Itron systems. Um, a lot of our radios actually predate uh, our purchase in the system. They're about 2005 inches along with a lot of our meters. So we had an opportunity of them since October to pull about 100 meters out of the system. We weren't getting good radio reads on them. So we actually uh, took the opportunity to pull them out and we actually installed new meters. And we took those hundred out and we tested them. Um, 30 of the meters that we pulled out actually failed to meet our criteria. Our criteria is three percent plus or minus three percent. We actually test them at three flow rates, uh, minimum flow rates usually uh, very low flow, like uh, 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 less than a gallon a minute. Mid flow rate for each meter and then a high flow rate. So again, when we did that testing, uh, over 30% of the meters came back as not recording properly. And most of them, actually all of them were reporting low. So we were losing money.
This is a money maker.
Yeah, this is money maker. And right now it's causing us issues because as the radios are failing, we're having to go in instead of just touching the unit to replace a radio. In some cases, we can't actually put a new radio onto the old meter bodies. Uh, we're stuck in a situation of just replacing them out. So I'd rather be more proactive about this and sweep through the system. We're looking at changing out to the Neptune meter system that we've used in Desert Hills and it's been very successful for us out in Desert Hills and have a unified system overall. Uh, when I first brought this project forward, it had more funding in it. Um, that's been reduced because there's 540 meters that I don't have to care for, which is the carefree ones, which by the end of the year, well, most of those will be changed out in the system. So we've reduced it from a, a four year or five year request to four years because of that need. So. The next project is the rehabilitation of an eight inch water line cave for Washington. This is the wash, this, this is the project that we've um, had our project, the water line that we've had project uh, problems with. And the project, and this is a request that actually had from our water, uh, water advisory committee was, uh, we had the project further out. I got a cost estimate to go from basically 52nd Street, uh, less the few hundred feet of pipeline that went all the way in, all the way out to 44th Street and do a, an interior liner of that. So that if it does break, we're not dependent on the, the pipe itself. We're actually having a Kevlar bag in effect on it. It was about half a million dollar shoot that entire run. It's over a mile, like a mile and a half, if I remember correctly. So uh, we got a recommendation by our water advisor committee, just because of the three breaks that we've had in the same general area of actually going in and isolating just uh, where the line comes up. The west bank of the Cape Creek Wash, that seems to be the worst location. They trenched into the Kalachi and then they put the pipe directly on top of this Kalachi trench with no bedding backfill. So if we can line that, we're less likely to get some breaks, then we can go out in the future and, and line the rest of the line. So the suggestion is to try that technology. It's first time of trying it and seeing how successful it is. And success will be that we don't have to go back out in the desert and, and repair that line in the next near future. Um, and another new project to the capital program is the, it's uh, updating in the water treatment plant to remove the Trident uh, filters and add the Paul's Trident or West Tech filters. So when we installed the Paul filters a couple of years ago, the way it got addressed with Miracle Pa County, uh, who actually issues our operational permits is they looked at the Paul's as being a um, a pilot study. In fact, they said you can run the two systems, but in effect, we're running two different technologies with the membranes and the older um, uh, filter medias that we have at the plant. They gave us a four year operational window to run in that configuration. But the end of that project, we have to, ended that timeframe, we actually have to make a decision. So we've added this, we found that out during the C I P budgeting last year. So we didn't have time to sort of develop the scope of work. So we've added it this year. The thought would be that it doesn't make sense to start going backwards. The Paul's have been a reliable system for us producing very good quality of water. So we think that's the best option and we did that evaluation with Black and Beach that they showed that was the best option moving forward. So the thought would be that we would um, in, starting next year, started uh, removing the, the Trident West Tech filters out of the, out of the system. Right now, we only have 2 million gallons a day of, of Paul membrane treatment units out there and we, we have backups. We back it up with the West Tech filters, but the plan is only permitted for 3 million gallons a day. Uh, we talked with Paul and, and the option of removing the West Tex and then putting in 1 million gallons. So we retain our 3 million gallon a day treatment capacity is, is only a hundred or a few hundred thousand dollars different than if we went with the two member, 2 million gallon a day membrane, uh, Paul membrane module inside the plant. So our suggestion is to remove the palm, the West Tech units, install another 2 million gallons of Paul unit. So that we'll have a 4 million gallon a day water treatment plant for only a few hundred thousand dollars more than it would cost us to continue to add a 3 million gallon plant. So the project set up, that's about 3.8 million dollars is what our current estimate is to, to do that work. And we'd start it next fiscal year, July, actually, uh, in a year, uh, so 18 months, I'll start the design process on that and start working with Miracle Pa County and wrapping up our permits on that. Uh, and the last project is just adding in, it's a waterline looping or replacement program. We have some money in the capital program and this is something that with the master planner, really want to, to, to get in depth with more. We've really found in Desert Hills, one of our biggest problems out there is the Desert Hill system is, is even less looped and uh, less reliable than the, the Cape Creek system. Um, and but we actually have been uh, successful in using operational funds we have in the Cape Creek budget uh, to build that. But I think looking forward, we're going to have to identify some projects, uh, some larger projects, more expensive. So at this point, because of the other pressures, I put it towards the end of the five year C I P. And as we go through our master planning effort, we might want to ask to have that move forward, but obviously we have to deal with funding constraints. Uh, with that to answer um, uh, Carrie's question, we're looking at right now, the city of Phoenix uh, water interconnect project. And the uh, the upgrade to the water treatment plant, which was new to the, the C I P of looking at getting those funded. Um, as a, with alone at this point, that's what, when, when we started the discussions with the rate model, uh, and a few months ago, that's what we were looking at doing. So about half of this capital improvement program, we'd be looking to look to get funding for. Um, the smaller projects would be hard to wrap together into an overall project unless we went out for our own revenue bonds. Um, but at least those two projects, we believe we can move forward with and, and, and secure something like a whiff alone at this point. Any questions? I'll keep going here. So I know we've got to get brought through here. Uh, if they're in good quality, uh, um, right now, there's only been 14 have been changed out. Um, uh, those were actually, we had those tested and those were just not usable. So. Yeah, most of them are of the older generation. If there's any usable ones, we will bring them back and recycle them in. Uh, we've been successful, we're actually working with um, uh, Carefree in a way, because they actually are on a different billing program that we can send them a billing file. They can read the meters on our schedule and give it back to us. So they're looking at being, starting to change the meters out, which actually helps us in, in a way while we're still uh, sending water to those customers that will actually have new meters to go against. But um, yeah. So in Desert Hills, uh, we've got a project and this money in that we spent this year, it's called well rehab and new well casing. Uh, we spent monies this year on working on our Galvin and our 10th Street wells of, uh, doing some work to try and clean them out. The, the Galvin wall was done because it was, uh, we had a failure in the pump. Uh, the 10th Street while we elected to pull out, because it hadn't been pulled out for about five years and, and the uh, uh, we wanted to do some work on that. The condition of that casing is, is to say the best thing actually is terrible. Um, basically there is no casing left on that well. So we've got money uh, in uh, just over a year to come in and potentially re-drill. I know with our water resource policy, we looked at the fact that uh, long term, we can't support uh, or can't support the system uh, growth out there or existing system on well water. But we do believe especially the 10th Street well, it's, it's near collapse condition at this point. So we're going to put the motor back in, we're going to do a dry ice cleaning on it, but uh, we need to look at either replacing that or our Galving uh, well casing. So it makes sense to look at replacing one of those two in the next few years. So at least we can keep some groundwater production going in Desert Hills. The steel tank reconditioning project has been something it's, we're carrying over most of the funds. I've actually got a con, a consultant engaged. We're going to continue, uh, we're wrapping up in the next few weeks, uh, inspection of all four tanks and they're going to come back with a recommendation on scope of work. Um, the way uh, the, the tank reservoir world works, you don't want to take these reservoirs out during the summertime when she's one, we actually need it for our peaks. We actually are trying to work on scopes of work that we can do next fall. So we've pushed that out. I've asked the money to be carried forward. It's been same about a million dollars in C I P for last couple of years. And we just have, last year I was unable to get it going. This year we're a little behind schedule. So I'm just asking to be, have that pushed out. As we develop that scope of work, we can determine whether or not we need the full $1 million, approximately $1 million to complete the work or we can do some savings. We're looking at uh, four steel reservoirs out in Desert Hills that we need to maintain and keep functioning, working. The integrated master plan, we're just asking for a little bit of money to be carried forward because again, it'll be one scope of work for all systems. Uh, but uh, we're just behind on that one. So it'll, it'll wrap into next fiscal year. Want to make sure the funds are available. The annual pipeline improvement program, uh, indicated in, in Cave Creek, we've been uh, doing that more with the operational funds in Desert Hills. Uh, we actually have a dedicated capital project for that. As we've been doing the mapping out there, uh, I've actually requested, actually have the funding up uh, to um, uh, $150,000, I believe it was before 75 or $80,000. I've come to conclusion that it's just, it's critical that we start getting the system as we continue to operate that system. We need to start looking and operate our looping the system and adding uh, uh, links to allow us to send the water in different, different directions. Right now, we've got way too many dead end lines out in Desert Hills and it, it's causing some water quality issues, less so. Uh, but it's more just overall system reliability and we need to start uh, you know, working on that system. Uh, a new project we've added is actually service line replacement program. So this is uh, something that we've seen more so in Desert Hills than we have in Cave Creek. But a lot of the service lines are actually uh, of polyethylene and they're actually are failing. That's our biggest problem out in Desert Hills is the failing of these individual service lines. Um, our challenges are, they seem to always seem to fail under the major roads that Miracle Pa County maintains, which means that we're dealing with uh, uh, repair underneath the uh, 7th Street or Cloud Road or something like that, which is a difficult. Um, so we know we need to get them out. A lot of jurisdictions actually have, have over the years have done something similar to this and developed an entire program. Our thought would be that we would identify areas of, that we've seen breaks and just go through and work with the contractor, develop a scope of work and just get the service lines all replaced. Our staff have been very successful. Instead of just putting repair bands on, we are now spending the time and effort to actually replace them. But this is be a larger proactive of going into an area and just getting them all out before they break. Uh, we have, I think, helped the system with what we've done, but we've, you know, we're just, we haven't been proactive with it. We're doing it as they happen. Um, the staff have been doing great that if there's an adjacent line that's breaking or in a bad condition or hasn't broken yet, we actually replaced it at the same time as we get a trench open. We're looking at doing stuff like that, but this is really going out proactively, replacing those service lines in Desert Hills before they break. We talked about water meters and actually the water meters in Desert Hills, while they're a good system right now, we start looking at five years, uh, they'll start to age out. So we have to start building a program together and we've asked for a new project, $50,000 at the end of the five year cycle to start that replacement cycle. And start replacing it out, uh, though the, the meters will be over 10 years old at that point. Um, some of them will have, have had the volume pass through them. So we saw it's proactive, improving to start uh, budgeting for that. And then uh, there's the updates to the 7th Street uh, reservoir booster station. That's a site that um, it feeds about a square mile area north of Joy Ranch Road in, in um, Desert Hills. And this year we had some issues out at the site itself. Um, and actually about 10 years ago, had an upgrade done to it where they added a Tiger Flow booster uh, pumps get out there. We actually had some issues with the P L C at that site. And then uh, when we actually looked at, there's some piping configuration issues that we need to get addressed. And we needed some control issues to, to control and monitor the reservoir level. We actually don't see the reservoir level. So we built a project to allow us to address that all next year at that site. So that sums up the key, the Desert Hills. And so without any questions, I'll keep going on wastewater. The manual rehabilitation program, I've talked to you about that uh, in length. Uh, I think as we go through the collection system assessment and some of the things we're finding, I've sort of lumped that together with the collection system repairs. We've added funding to both those projects because as we've gone through um, and, and found issues, we're seeing things like uh, the inflow and infiltration are still a major issue for the town. And we do have uh, um, a lot of work to continue to do to maintain the system and this, the system continues to age. We're going to have to continue to, to be proactive and get ahead of that. Uh, we still are having a lot of stormwater inflow. Just before Christmas, we did um, see a large storm event. Uh, happy to report that the Ranch Minjana pumps were able to keep up with it and staff, although they went to site because no one could sleep that day. We didn't have to do anything. The site worked by itself. So, and no flow left the site. So I'm happy to report that. Though I had a very anxious day with my staff. Uh, master planning and recurring the fun tour for that. Uh, the rerouting of the stagecoach lift station flows, um, that was actually split over two years. We've asked to actually um, bring it over to one. The stagecoach lift station um, is located at a point where um, it can actually tie into the eight inch force main that was put in for Ranch Minjana. Um, and then we're at a location that we can, we can discharge directly into it and send that flows down to Carefree Highway. Uh, that would eliminate right now about two, 20,000 gallons a day of flow that goes to the Ranch Minjana lift station and we're double pumping. So it just adds more efficiency. We have to go back into a traffic lane and, and expose the force main, but I think long term, it's a better situation and there's no need to be double pumping. It has caused some issues at the Ranch Minjana site because uh, uh, when we've had to, to shut that down or have had issues with events at that site. Um, it, it's, it's hard to deal with. Like you got suddenly 80 gallons a minute extra flow coming at you because this lift station was pumping at the same time. So that would eliminate that and make a more reliable system. Uh, we've got the connections uh, for the state of Detroit and Canyon Ridge Estates. Uh, we had the funding a little further out in the C I P, but this is actually something that the wastewater subcommittee asked me to move uh, forward. Uh, the master plan allows us to look at that a little bit more, but the thought here is that this would be funding for a design study to look at. Uh, we have a state of Detroit and Canyon Ridge Estates were constructed with dry sewers. Um, there's been some work previously done, but this would allow us truly get into an evaluation of how we could do either by gravity sewer or pump uh, lift stations. Uh, get a system together to allow those to be converted. And then we could come back and obviously talk to council about the process we go by, but we truly don't have a process or a plan in place on how to actually convert those dry sewer areas to a wet live sewer. And we think we'd, it's not something we can do, I think, with the master plan. So do you think we need to go out and do some survey work and verify what, what will work gravity wise, et cetera? Um, and this would be money set aside after the master plan is completed, we go in and do that study itself and, and have something basically a, a template that you've been going forward.
I've got to comment on that one, if I may. The engineering behind that and the construction is easy. The hard part is you've got people who've double paid for a sewer and a septic system. And the sewer is going to cost them at the current rates, what 67 bucks a month, something like that. Uh, with, and with the, with the numbers I'm seeing here, adding uh, about $26 per month per account, $2.7 million. It's $26 a month uh, for, for the 600 people that are on the thing. So growth is the only way out of this mess in the wastewater system. We got to have a plan that doesn't set off a revolution and a feeling of unfairness in those communities before we start spending money on the pipes. I mean, how do you get the people to convert? Uh, other towns have done this. I mean, I, I was raised in West Phoenix. We did it out there. I don't remember. I was a little bit of a kid, but uh, if you can believe that. But, but, but to me, the hard part of this is, is how, how do you craft a conversion plan to convert people from the septic system to the sewer? And that's, that's going to be difficult.
Yeah, that'd be something I would recommend we, we, we look at as part of that project, but also knowing how the system will work. I found some documents recently, which looked at routing a line along the Cave Creek Wash and actually having to do a new armoring along the wash itself to get the sewer line to work gravity wise. And that makes me a little nervous about that and I, you know, work that out. Now we're getting a new gravy line into the north end of the water ranch project. So yeah, I, I agree that that'd be something that we would, I, I think could be easily added into that scope of work. The engineering to get the lines and figure out different alignments and whether you can pump it or, or not, or it could tie into say the, the main line that we have on Carefree Highway right now is a little bit quicker to do. And then we could have some discussions on policies. How do you move this forward? Right now, we, the policy that town has, we wait for the um, the septic systems to fail. If there's a live active sewer within three hundred feet of the property lined, then we ask them to make the connection or require them to make a connection. We don't grant the waiver to allow them to continue and go to Miracle Bay County and get new septic permit is how it works.
Yeah, and and I'm really, I was gonna save these comments to the end of this, but this wastewater is I mean, we don't have enough people to support this kind of spending on a wastewater system. There's just not enough money coming in and there may never be until those bonds are paid off. The 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 missing thing here is how do we get? We have to have more customers on the wastewater system. They're just, I mean, are there customers? Are there potential customers on Cave Creek Road or other places? I just think we've got to have it. And I'm speaking to carry it now. We need a plan on this. We need a plan to expand the customer base on the wastewater system. It's it's been in there 10 years and there's nothing. We've got zero progress on code changes, on distances. We just got to get more customers. And that people who existing now customer, not just the new, that's helping. I mean, the new houses being built are kind of helping us out a little bit. But we we need revenue for the wastewater system and there needs to be a plan to bring that revenue in.
You want me to do it? Yeah, most of the most of those subdivisions on Carefree Highway were the lines were put in when when the plan was for the the line to go down New River Road and along Cave Creek Wash. When the opportunity for Walmart came along, we went ahead and went the other way and then down. So there's there's no place to hook them to. And because it runs uphill or runs downhill, you'd actually have to have a pump and 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 pump the stuff back up to Cave Creek or Carefree Highway in order to get it into the system. And that would require disrupting people's yards and properties and all kinds of stuff. And what he was just talking about was possibly extending the line down the edge of the watch, which is pretty scary. If you saw half a house hanging off the hanging off the wash about 10 years ago. Yeah, well. Yeah. And and then and then that same reason, all of those businesses on Carefree Highway are hooked up to the sewer system, which is where the revenues come. So it, you know, it was it was at the time, it was a decision that that needed to be made in order to to have the revenues to do like what we did, what we started today with with the fire department, you know? Yes.
Want to be recognized.
I see you. You're wrong.
Following up on Mr. Morris's comments and Sean's. Isn't it? Wouldn't it be extremely difficult to get more users, current people in town to go over to our sewer system because of the low density? I would agree with Mr. Morris's comment in in Phoenix where you had higher density. And many, many years ago, you could put a septic field on a lot that was fifty feet wide. Those days are gone. But the cost of of the line, the maintenance of the line and pumps, when you have such a low density gets to be, isn't the cost prohibitive in 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 doing that almost? And the numbers that the potential person or the unit would had lot would have to pay is 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 almost astronomical at that point, isn't it?
Yeah, something we had to evaluate. And when you look at our densities outside the town core, which most of the town core is already connected to sewer system. It does get more prohibitive. In the last master plan, they looked at really adding sewers or designing sewers that would go up the eastern side of or off of Cape Creek Road to the east of Black Mountain. And soaring that area where you have some slightly higher densities in there and smaller lots. But when we look at our current policy, which we only are thresholds three hundred feet from the sewer to the property line. You start looking at that, you can usually get one property to connect, but the next property is sort of beyond that. And we we run into that occasionally. So that'd be the thought of where's the best bank for our dollars? Where's the most accounts that we can get brought in? Obviously, when the council worked with Hidden Canyon, that's forty five lots, I believe it is. They're going to be connected to our source system and bringing that flow in. And there's been some other developments, but yeah, with the lower density, it does become a challenge operationally. Then it comes more, you know, we have to clean the lines a little bit more, make sure that they're flowing. If we we bring as example Canyon Ridge in, you know, each of those lots is is got a stub out to the property. It's supposed to be stubbed to the location where the septic tank is so that they can make an easier conversion. But depending on how many lines I've got or homes connected, you know, that flow might not make it all the way down the end of that line. So I've got to deal with that operationally until we can get that to to enough homes connected to flush it out. And these are things that we do need to work on and look at and to evaluate what's the best opportunity for us to do it. And that leads into the next project, which is right now, we didn't have funding in the capital program to allow for extension of the system. It would be something that we're looking at. We added, it was a project we actually used in last year CIP. I think we only had one years of funding, one year funded. So we've added three years towards the end of the the capital cycle. Based on input from the wastewater subcommittee about trying to build a program. You know, obviously, when you have a program, you have to build the criteria. What's the evaluation? What are we gonna do? But without any funding, it's it's hard sometimes to get an individual property owner to extend the sewer system. But if we were to to start extending system, it might be easier to get people to convert over. And then, you know, based on the fact that if you know, for the process, it currently is the septic systems are regulated by Miracle Bay County. The Miracle Bay County actually looks to us as regulatory agency to tell them whether or not that property needs to make a connection to the sewer system. So right now our criteria is three hundred feet. So if it's beyond three hundred feet, we like we write a letter basically saying that connection is not required and they can get a septic permit. So.
I just want to point out that in Peoria, where you used to work, it's over, it's a quarter of a mile. The code. Now, they may not, they may not enforce that all the time. But it it's not, it's not just an economic issue. It's a pollution issue. It it's a pollution issue. We got, we have at least five hundred homes in in our sub basin here that that take water out of that system and we'd like it to stay clean. So it's a pollution issue. Other towns have done it all over the country. I think there's, and so we're not blazing new trails here. We just have to steal from other towns that have solved this problem before us.
Example, Peoria, I was there. Again, most of the Peoria, it was North Peoria, there were large subdivisions. So the Uerville were easier with the subdivisions to make that. And we actually had to change town code because we had situations where at individual property owners who didn't have access, we couldn't require adjacent property owner to give someone a right to their easement. So we actually had to change code. So there are, there are issues we have to work through and I like to bring those forward to council and have that discussion with council and see how we want to move forward with it. And the best way to approach it. In the other jurisdictions I worked in, we actually did have programs to extend the sewer system to areas to allow for easier connection. So if someone's septic system fails, if there's a septic or sewer line close by, it's a lot easier than saying, well, by the way, now you have to 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 go and jack and bore up a Black Mountain and cut through rock to get a sewer line in. If we can start that infrastructure, it might be easier to start that process. So it's something we need to talk about and look at, I think, with council. Next couple of projects, we had a condition assessment and upgrades for the wastewater treatment plant brought forward a project to to work on the bar screens at the headworks. But as that project, as that plant starts to age, we actually wanted us to pause after the master plan done, the master plan really look at a direction and with the size of the plants, et cetera, this, but this assessment, we'd have someone come in and actually look at all the equipment. Gives a full evaluation of the the assessment of the equipment, the condition of the equipment and start developing a program to start replacing stuff as needed. Next year, the plan will be or this year, the plant is twelve years old. It's been twenty four seven operation, twenty four seven our operation. And things start to wear out. So wastewater is a hazardous environment and and the equipment deals with that. But we, I think we need to start planning and programming to start doing that type of work. Otherwise, we might get into situations where we get into failure modes and reacting rather than being proactive. And that's what the goal of this program would be, that new project in the CIP. Yeah, the project, the Ranch Minjana lift station upgrades, it's out at the end of this capital program with the pump upgrades. We're feeling pretty good about the capacity of the Ranch Minjana lift station. If we move forward with the project to reroute the stagecoach lift station, that again can take up to twenty thousand gallons of flow out of that site. But long term, I still think we need to look at doing some more Stephen upgrades that site. And we've looked at within next five to at the end of the five year cycle of actually starting the designs, that hundred thousand dollars is to do the design of a new lift station to replace Ranch Minjana lift station as currently configured. We wanted to, as part of the master plan, we want to discuss this, but I think it needs to be almost a separate study is is the recharge of the wastewater treatment plant F1. On the base issues, it bothers me is the fact that, you know, when we generate the most flow and and wastewater flow is an effluent for the the town in the wintertime is when Ranch Minjana, which is our one customer can't utilize that flow. So we send it over the wash and it gets no beneficial use of the town. Been something that's been identified ever since that project was, the plant was moved is actually, there was discussions about trying to do some recharge, do something to help balance out the effluent flow. So the master plan can help look at that, but this would be a specific project to look at where you could recharge it, what you can do with it. And 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 just doing a study in one year is no valid. I think we need to actually have some funding right after that to allow us to construct something. You know, if we want to go in and do something, even just do what they refer to as a managed facility, we're allowed to go down to a wash corridor. We might have to do some monitoring wells, but even that requires permitting, et cetera. So we just need to have a project put together to help us get beneficial use out of all the town's water. Right now, our our F1 is not being best utilized at this point. We have the projects to do some specific works at the water treatment plant to new project, which is at the headworks itself. We brought for the request to get a new inlet bar screen. But we also know we actually have another piece of equipment in that the grid unit that actually has failed also. So we prioritize that as being something we do next year. And we also are finding some issues with the aeration system in the basins themselves. Those membranes are starting to age out. We're seeing some issues in the SBR basin number two, where we actually had a broken leg in the aeration system. We've been able to cap that. The cap actually came off. We had to bring a diver back in. We're doing this live and actually put a replacement cap on, but as they've gone down, they were in this past summer. Six months later, they've gone back in and they're saying our aeration system is is producing less air. The aeration system is actually one of the primary systems at our wastewater treatment plant. It goes adds mixing and adds oxygen to the treatment process. So as that system ages out, we might need to replace some. Each of those SBR basins has about, I think, just under twelve hundred aeration heads that need to be replaced. So it's going to take some time to go do this. And we have a couple of other minor projects, smaller projects related to that at the plant to get done. So we've asked for some funding next year to allow us to start that work at the at the plant. And then I've asked for, because we're getting indications that the delivery of the inlet screen might fall back into the after the end of fiscal year. So I've asked to have carryover on those funds just in case. So we're, it's this year's dollars, but it'll be carried forward to next year in case the expenditure doesn't hit until July. So we're not using next year's dollars with that. So. That sums up the wastewater. The last utility projects or our program that we have is actually the water resources program. So that initially was put together to allow for a place to put water resources and and last year was put together to to fund the capital costs for the non-Indian agricultural water allocation that the town is is pursuing or has has in place. What we had is two other projects in there is to both to add cost to recharge the municipal and industrial allocation that we currently won't be utilizing and to recharge all of the cap and non-Indian agricultural water. So what the project's built on here is the last project is paying for the back capital cost. We've already made our first payment. We've got four more payments to make. And the rest of it is they give us new funding to allow us to recharge and start generating long term storage credits. So currently that's not in the operational budget. And this really is based on the cost as projected right now by the CIP for the next five years of what it would be to take that water and recharge it.
If 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 we tried to get to get this NIA water this year, is it available?
Actually, it is when we placed our order, because we've already placed our water this with the CIP, I or I requested all three hundred and eighty six acre feet. So we've asked them actually to to work with them and recharge it later in the year. It's what we've asked to do.
So it won't be available next year. Well, this year, this year's twenty twenty two.
Yeah, currently it's available with the tier shortages, what they've they've projected has is that next year with next year's projection will go into a tier two. I think it's a two B slash three shortage. And then the the non-Indian agricultural allocation will be starting to be cut back. So the thought was we we asked for it all this year. We're gonna try and get a beneficial use of of generating storage credits for next year. I don't think we can rely on all three hundred and eighty six acre feet. Believe our municipal and industrial supplies are secure at this point for the next couple of years. But as we start generating credits and start putting this water into beneficial use, it's just gonna help our water portfolio moving forward. With that, I've gone to, I've talked for a while. I know I gotta get through some other stuff, but I can answer any questions we have, council may have.
You have a big job in front of you.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got a couple of projects that are budgeted in the building and fire safety department that are scheduled for grant funding.
I was thinking about just go ahead and standing up there at the podium because there's only two of them. I'm not like Sean. I could probably do it in one breath. The first item that's listed in there is for the bathrooms for the rodeo grounds. This has been a long term project for the town. It has been budgeted for multiple times. The it it becomes the first sacrificial lamb in the budget whenever we don't have money or Sean needs more money. It goes by the wayside. So we've moved it to the grant side of things. We have had conversations with the rodeo and they are looking for grant funding. They've also talked to us about possibly committing money to towards building that in the future. Once we acquire that money, then it would become a viable project where we would move forward with. Probably the best case scenario for something like that would be a fifty fifty match, whether it be through multiple grants or just one single source. Estimate for that was was done last year. We had a breakdown and it was about two hundred and sixty nine thousand dollars to complete construction for that. What that would do would allow us to move forward with the purchase of the rodeo grounds. We do have to have the bathrooms in place in order for that agreement to be exercised with the BLO. It also would allow us to increase rents there currently. Individuals who want to rent the rodeo grounds have to bring their own portable toilets with them. And then as soon as their events over, they have to pack them up and take them with them back to where they came from. The second item there is a culmination of what the Cave Creek Rodeo would like to have happen in the VIP area. They approached us a few years ago and talked about wanting to improve that area, putting in a a better facility where they could serve food and better entertain their their guests and then also rebuild what would be the north end of the arena. That whole skybox in would have to be redone and then also would provide increased seating there and a better view for they'd be able to put more people up there too. That would be not done unless they came up with funding for it to help offset the costs, basically is what it comes down to. I don't see that coming up. That's why it's the priority number two. And with that, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Morris. Full disclosure, I talked with you today and I talked with Beth Cornell today. And you know, we've, we've been fool around with getting actual ownership of that of the rodeo re, which I think ought to be a town priority myself. But when we talk about other improvements out there, I I really think we need to have a task force of the community, the staff, the rodeo, others in town who might be interested to come up with a plan for that facility. It's grossly underutilized. We just put brand new bleachers in there. Now we're talking about bathroom, we're drifting into spending a lot of money without really identifying its value to the town, which I think is substantial. And we've got one big event this year and but it could have twenty, thirty, forty, fifty events, horse events there and have some significant revenue. I'd really like to see the town put together a task force, come up with recommendation, a strategy. What does this mean to the town? What are we gonna have? What's it gonna be in? What should look like in ten or twenty years? So we have some guidance on this on it because it is an asset. The other concern I have is if you put in bathrooms. The other concern I have is if you put in bathrooms, and we discussed this today, the big cost is the septic system. And then you go do improvements elsewhere and you build a kitchen in here. They always projects need be part of the strategic plan that fits together. He's only ought to build one septic system. And it ought to be sized for whatever you're going to do into the future. It's a lot cheaper to do it upfront. So. That that's my recommendation is is we figure out just what the town is doing out there with rodeo and what we should be doing to make it a real asset for the community. And I I'm willing to help.
Yeah, Mike Mike put in return lanes for the for the roping steers, what, two years ago, three years ago?
Yeah, we we redid the south end, moved it over to make it more convenient to be able to use for steer roping. It was set originally towards the middle of the arena. And when you're releasing the steer and you're chasing it down there, it. Guys don't like run. They like to run them over against the rail a little bit. Makes it a little bit faster time for them. So we redid that. We've done that all in house. We've also created some some changes in the back end of it. We were able to leverage the area in the very northeast corner where there's now a second arena there because. They had fencing in and everything and all we had to do is go in and redo the soil to bring that up to a second arena. So now the the facility has a warm up arena in addition to the main arena, too.
And if you get to get some restrooms out there, you get a lot more roping events. Maybe we'll steal some of them ropers from from Wickenburg that are going over there and spending all that money.
Restrooms would help. It would also allow us to increase the rate on that because currently we charge about three hundred dollars a day for the use of that thing.
Are you done, Mike?
Yeah, I told you I could almost do it in one breath, maybe two.
I don't want to speak for Hal, but I've I've been looking at the pavement management program and looking at the dollar amounts that we have. Had in the budget since we adopted the pavement management program. So it's newer. But we planned for about a million dollar get a dollars, give or take in public works for road projects. So if you take out. The Desert Awareness Park, Galloway Wash and the pedestrian safety crossing. It appears, and again, I don't want to speak for Hal, but I think he's playing catch up on some of these projects that he's got in there. So if if you took out some of those projects, it's down to about one point one to one point two. And then I think he's factored in increased costs over when you get to the some of the year year four, year five, that kind of thing. He's just. Estimated an increased cost based on the project. So I think we can fine tune it and maybe come up with a. A plan for how we we fund this over a period of time so that we keep the dollar amount a little bit more consistent. With a percent increase of the costs and kind of factor that into, you know, our long term plan. I think we can do that. But anything else specific to the roads themselves, the road projects? Okay, then we have the trails planning and zoning.
We just can't keep ignoring roads because it's cost a whole lot more to redo them than to maintain them.
That's true.
Uh, so the the trails portion, I've already discussed the story drive crossing. That is hopefully going to be grant funded from the pedestrian study that we had last year. The good thing about doing that study and going through that process is it is it gives municipalities the ability to then go and. Submit for grant funding opportunities because we've got an actual, you know, third party independent assessment of what's going to make pedestrian traffic safe. So that's the story drive. We're estimating the. It's I believe eighty thousand in construction and twenty five thousand in design. Those are educated guesses based on Nighthawks and that type of technology utilized in other jurisdictions. You know, where you push the button and alerts trap oncoming vehicle or traffic that someone is going to be utilizing the crosswalk. Sorry, drive is identified because it is a major connection that that sorry trail is really the the east west. Blood vein for all trail users that are, you know, anybody wanting to come from the west, access the town core. That is the 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 main trail connection to do so. The other project that we have is the Gateway Trail, great Gateway Trailhead improvements. That the town was awarded a grant from the State Parks Department. And they match up to a certain dollar amount each year. We look at different. Projects that we can do to enhance that over a several year period. Then Maricopa County and State Parks would be matching and assisting with the funding there as well. So we've got. We did a design several years back for horse trailer parking, holding pens. You know, water for, you know, horses and things like that. So that's that's all. Just developing that into a a proper trailhead. Is the other project we identified. And and like I said, if we don't get grant funding matching, then we're not putting it in the budget and spending it. So a lot of it has been carryover year over year. So. And it's one percent of the total C I P cost.
Vice Mayor.
Mr. Casper, I'll ask the same question I asked last year. Now, is the community garden not included in there?
There is no community garden in any of the design proposals that I have seen or been a part of.
And the. Sorry, drive pedestrian crossing. Ever since this this came up, which I think is a a good idea, we really need to have something there. I'm a little I'm really concerned about traffic. And a hundred and five thousand dollars doesn't seem to be enough money to. Take care of what would I would consider to be appropriate safety precautions. Has this been budgeted out so that you know a hundred and five thousand dollars will make sure that we don't have some idiot come along and slam into a. A horse with a rider on it?
Vice Mayor, members of council, I'm sure if money cured idiocy. There would be a lot less in the world. However, a hundred and five, a hundred and five thousand is is what we've determined would be the the maximum amount of pocket from. From the planning department to to make this happen. So the the design is going to tell us what what we need. Like I said, I use the Nighthawk design as something that came out of the pedestrian study. Based on the site distance at that intersection would be probably the best solution for that. If something came along that required. A different solution, then we would look at additional funding to make it happen.
Thank you.
FBI Office Downers got these big, big ramp, concrete ramps that raise up out of the ground. Maybe we could just do that. I couldn't help myself. You're not going to make the drivers any smarter.
That wasn't a question, so I'm not going to respond. Were there any other questions from council? Thank you.
Doesn't look like it.
Last but not least, big money, Mr. Fire.
That's pretty good. Jamie got law enforcement applauding firefighter.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Glad to be here tonight. A couple of quick comments first. I do want to thank everybody for your support for getting us to today. I do agree with with your comments earlier and everybody's comments earlier. I think it was a breakwater event and I think it's going to serve the town well as we move forward. So thank you for your support as we've done this and and did all that. I do want to go back to my December sixth comment. I might not be chief, but I'm easy on the fireside. So I'm here to prove that again tonight. That I'm doing my best to try to. So sorry, Karen, sorry, sorry. I'm trying to spend as much money as I possibly can. And as you saw at the December sixth meeting. We spent and you guys agreed to almost a million dollars for equipment that we needed. Next week, we will spend another little over one million dollars to finish the purchase of the fire station. So all the capital that you gave us early on in a year, we've been doing everything we can to spend as much of that as we can. So what you'll see on the the capital projects list here is there's only three projects, two of them are carryover. And they're still pretty significant dollars. The one is the design and the remodel of the fire station. I have to give Daisy Mountain and and the town staff credit for what they did, how they turned that station around. And those of you that were there today, the way different than when we first got it and put the people in there. But the issue is it still does not meet the requirements of a up to date fire station, which was the the million dollars that you guys have approved and gals have approved, excuse me. To remodel that fire station. So that's that's carrying over. And the other carryover is the design. I will be putting out the R F P for design for the architects to see what we can do on that site. And hopefully I can get that paid out of this year's funding. I'm planning on still trying to do that. But if I can't, I'll still have to pay those guys for the design after the first of the year, first of the fiscal year. So that's the first big carryover. The second big carryover is mostly for the equipment for the new units. A lot of the equipment has been ordered and I think we've talked about this before. But because of the supply chain issues, a lot of the stuff that you saw, the the engine and a lot of the stuff you saw in the engine this morning. Has been loaned to us from Daisy Mountain and from the other departments. We've placed those orders, but I can't guarantee when those orders are going to come in. As they do, we will pay for that equipment. But that's still pretty significant. The engine alone is about two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars just for the equipment to put on that engine. And the other that you have approved for this year, which will come out of this year's funding already, is the brush truck that was extended out. Next year and in budgets for next year, but we're going to spend that this year. But then again, once again, that will come in March or April and we'll try and get all the equipment that we can without having to borrow it on that truck and page for. But if we don't. I still need the funding after the first of the fiscal year to make sure we can pay for that stuff. So that's pretty much the the additional funding that we have. The the third line there, this one in the middle is for. The water tender. We talked about that when we agreed to the contract and in the contract, the town will be purchasing a water tender. I put that two years out, maybe a little more out. But you saw the tender that the town is going to use for the next time as long as we can. It was at the station today. And we will keep that running as long as we can. But when that it it has already passed its replacement schedule. But we'll still keep that on for as long as we can keep that. That's the Daisy Mountain one that they've tried to be trying to replace. But eventually the town's going to end up having to pay for that. So that's why it's in there on the out years.
Jim, you know, I asked you about something this morning over there. The. Health hazard for firefighters from the toxic things in the smoke. And they were talking about some kind of device that cleans. The gear that gets all those contaminants and carcinogens off of it makes it safe for them to put back on after an event. They said it was they thought it was like eight thousand dollars. Can you can you get one of those in the budget for this coming year, too? So we can. We can protect them fellows like they ought to be.
I can follow up on that, Mayor. What we did with the station that we have now is we have put in two sets of washers and dryers. And if you roam through the station this morning, there was one set that's in the bay to handle the heavy stuff, the heavy carcinogens and all that stuff. And the second set, we replumbed and put in the inside, which is for their personal gear and uniforms and stuff. So we had to separate that out. That's one of the first things that we did. But as far as the equipment you're talking about, the way that they're we're handling it right now is. Every firefighter has two sets of turnout gears, which is the stuff you put on before you go in. So when they go to a fire and they are in a working fire and they come back, that stuff is bagged up and then taken to be contracted and to be cleaned. And the second set is there for the guys, you can gals to use. So they, that's how we're handling it right now, but I will check on the that equipment.
If it's cheap, if it's inexpensive like that, it's it's to me, it seems worth it for they're protecting us, we ought to protect them.
For sure, we can check on that with the remodel also because we might have a space issue, but I'll double check.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, counsel?
I do have one question. If and when Daisy Mountain gets a certificate of necessity for ambulance. My assumption would be that it would be based at the same location as the fire trucks and everything. So they could kind of go out, join together. Is is the reconstruction or the construction that's going to take place going to accommodate something like that? Or is that something that is totally one hundred percent a Daisy Mountain thing and it'd be in the future?
The. Yeah, Mayor and Vice Mayor, the the remodel of the station will take into account the future growth for possible additional crews or additional ambulances or whatever. Currently, we can house six people at that station, the way that it's set up. But the whole discussion on Daisy Mountain and the certificate of necessity and all of that stuff is going to have to come down the road a little bit. There's an awful lot of. Other stuff that has to discuss that first, but the station will be designed with the remodel with that in mind and with. I said currently it can hold six for six people at the same at the current time. Wow. See, I had more than Mike and I still beat him.
There's a hand.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Silva.
Chief, this question is not directly on point, but I'll ask it anyway, given the fact that. Our station opened up today. I keep getting calls and questions from residents in town that have paid quarterly, semi annually and annually. They continue to call rural metro to see to cancel it. And they're told that it's a contract. There's no short rate cancellation. And that if they paid for a year and they're halfway through it, Daisy Mountain keeps that money and will not be refunding it. Have you made any headroads into that? And is there an update or is that the way it's going to be?
I I can give you some updates and I'll let you know and let the council and Mayor and Council know that that has been a moving target that has frustrated me and. Carrie has calmed me down several times as we've talked about this. The rural metro has advised that they have stopped taking automatic payments and they were supposed to have done that in October. It weren't the. At one point when you signed up, you got a discount if you if you did an automatic payment. They stopped, were supposed to stop taking automatic payments in October. If you paid for the full year as the town did for the town facilities. The Royal Metro position, current position is that it's not their fault that they're not here. And so there is no refunds. And for though they're not charging people past the first of the year, they're not looking to refund. People that have paid for the entire year like the town did. The town's in that same exact boat. We paid for all that. That was part of the discussion as we talked about them maintaining the resources in that station for a few months until we got time to get in and clean that out. And the discussion was you have a whole bunch of people in town that are under contract. Until we take over today, like we did today, you're still required and by contracts to serve those people. But the last that I've gotten from them and even I called per direction turn on manager, I called the corporate village and corporate village. I'm sorry, corporate headquarters. And spoke with those folks and they they said that was a local or regional decision. And so. They've pretty much made kind of the decision, if you've paid, they're not going to give refunds because it wasn't their claim is it wasn't their fault that they aren't in the town.
This is really sounds to me like a class action suit. Since they're not allowed to serve anybody in this town now, are they?
That's correct.
So so they they have an inability to follow through on their part of any contract.
That's correct.
I got my money back. I called them up and they said, give me my money back. And they said, yes, sir, Vice Mayor. No, they didn't say that. They said, yes, and they did it instantly. So I, you know, I think that this must be a corporate thing, but. So I did, you know, I think that this must be a corporate thing, but. And I don't, I don't want to give, I'm not a lawyer. I can't do that because I don't get paid for my advice. But if I were a lawyer, I would advise people to start talking together and maybe jointly do something.
Councilman Roy.
Also, not totally on target here, but what are we calling the fire station?
The official number for the fire station.
Not the number, the name. Are we calling it the Cave Creek Fire Station or are we calling it the Daisy Mountain Fire Station?
We're calling it the Cave Creek Fire Station and it is Daisy Mountain number one forty-seven per the system. The regional automatic aid system that we joined today, it's number one forty-seven. So we caught, that's why the sign said Cave Creek Station One, because it's our first fire station. And it's but in the region, it's number one forty-seven. It depends on the the way that they number the the stations in the region is depending on your area. For example. Scottsdale is six hundred numbers. There's six oh one, six oh two, six thirteen. Daisy Mountain numbers. Who provide the service are the one hundred and forty numbers. So they're one forty, one forty-one, one forty-four, one forty-seven exact. So.
I I guess the reason that I ask is because. The sign that I saw today was welcome Daisy Mountain Fire Department, Cave Creek location or something to that effect. And people who were writing about today's inauguration called it the Daisy Mountain Fire Station. And and I think we need to be clear that this is the Cave Creek Fire Station. This is, you know, this was our doing. This is our money. I know it's in partnership and collaboration. And I'm, of course, obviously in agreement with all of that, but I think it needs to be made clear that this is the Cave Creek Fire Station.
The IGA requires that.
I didn't hear.
The IGA requires it to be called the Cave Creek Fire Station.
Okay.
The the sign that was put up says Cave Creek welcomes the Daisy Mountain Fire Department to Cave Creek Fire Station One. DMFD Station Number One Forty Seven. So it actually has two monikers.
That's that's the confusion.
It is. It is a little bit confusing.
Not a little bit because people were calling it the Daisy Mountain Fire Department and and that really bothered me because it's ours. In collaboration with them. And so these hats need to reflect that.
Right, those hats were done just to identify the event today. Though that is not the sign that's going on the car or on the vehicles. That has not.
Will we be privy to that design before it's approved?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Some fellow that wore tights, I think you said something along the lines of Rose by any other name is still Rose.
You're not, you're not in a communications and branding and image reputation department.
I believe if I flip through here, it would appear to me that concludes this evening's event.
If I could just. Make sure that, you know, I've I've. Heard and understood all of the the comments from everyone. So I think that we. Can go through the the public works streets and fine tune that. And we'll have more detailed discussion on. What perhaps the catch-up is in terms of projects that weren't funded in the past couple of years. And make sure that it's prioritized correctly. And then I think in the utilities. When we get in the next, say, three weeks or so, where's Sean? We're trying to have a session that is separate from a regular meeting. So we can sit down with the council. And the the water advisory committee members and go through the assumptions that have been used in the model. And where we've come and and what all we've put in it. So you understand. Kind of the details of that to make sure that we're on the same track, the same path. And if if you don't agree with the assumptions, then it's kind of hard to get to the outcome. So. We want to have a meeting. So if we're doing that, not on the eighteenth, by the way, the next meeting is Tuesday, the eighteenth, because Monday's a holiday. So if we can do it, maybe the following week or so. To have that initial discussion. I think then. We'll go over with Kevin and and Sean of what what the percentages are in terms of. Looking at rates and and covering the capital expenses and that will help flush out. The financing, what we're gonna finance, what we're paying for P and I, what we are paying each year for capital, kind of fine tune that. Is that? Will that be helpful? I think Bob had the most concern of we're in the weeds and need the bigger picture.
Well, I mean, the the things that 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 are gonna be determined is. The 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 numbers that go into the front of the rate study is what I'm interested in really understanding as compared to the last rate study. Because if it's the same number, there shouldn't be any rate increase due to CIP, maybe other things, but not CIP. So I and and that's that was the unknown thing coming out of the rounds. Analysis and and funding fire department without a property tax. Or sales tax is that what what is that? What is the implication for water and utility rates? And that's where my focus is right now.
Okay, all right. Could I make one last request?
Sure.
Carrie, could we have a calendar, an annual calendar for all of our council meetings? So I could put it in my electronic. Thank you. Okay, that that's all I had unless you had any other questions, your direction.
Any other questions, your comments, your?
One last comment to give kudos to Jim Ford, who did an exceptional job for us all last year. We really appreciate what you've done for us.
Yeah, thanks.
Right. Yeah, wow.
Blew up the budget, but you know, everybody's happy with us. We have a motion to adjourn. All in favor. All right, thank you.